Heavenly Father, tonight as we bow in your presence, we acknowledge you, Lord, tonight, as the source of every blessing and every good and perfect gift. And, Lord, these are critical times in our land, our nation, and our communities, and we pray, Lord, that you'll continue to bless us as we acknowledge you as our Lord and our sovereign. Tonight, we want to thank you for these leaders that were standing before tonight, and we ask you that you'll bless them. It's with great respect and great honor that we pray for them tonight because you've instructed us to do so in your word, but, Lord, we have great concern for them, for the great responsibility that's on their shoulders here to lead our community. And, Lord, we pray that as they think of all the things that are before them and the decisions they have to make and the guidance that they have to give and the courses they have to charter for this community, that you'll help them to remember Solomon whenever he realized the great responsibility that was on his shoulders to lead his people, and he prayed for your wisdom. And so, we pray that you'll grant them wisdom and lead them and guide them. Thank you that they have given their time and their lives to lead us. We pray that you'll bless their families and their homes. And we pray, Lord, tonight, that you'll bless this meeting and you'll guide us with your spirit, and you'll bless our community, Lord, and our great city, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Galt, would you do the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
We do have one addition. We'll have an executive session to discuss the possible sale of surplus property.
Okay. Tonight, we have an appeal, and it's the Decision Demolition Control Committee for 114 North Third Street. And, City Manager, would you like to talk about this a little bit?
Oh, briefly, this is something that the City Commission rarely sits as this board. It's an appeal of a decision that's been made by another board that's appealable to the City Commission, similar to an appellate court, I suppose, only, of course, they're not a court, but inasmuch as this is a very infrequent occurrence here, it's probably a good idea if we had the procedure outlined briefly. So, I've asked Steve Irvin, our Director of Planning and Development, to give you a brief overview of that and also to provide you with some information about the process that the review board used in making its determination on this.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to, as the City Manager said, make a few comments on the process of the demolition permit from where it started to where we are right now. R&amp;B Real Vest submitted an application requesting approval to demolish the structure at 114 North Third Street, which is referred to as the Carriage House. Upon receipt of the application, the Demolition Control Committee, made up of the Planning Director, the Chief Building Inspector, and the Chairman of the Historical and Architecture Review Commission, held a meeting. On March 17th, 2012, a certificate of demolition was issued for the demolition of 114 North Third Street. This decision was based upon the review and a numerical ranking of four different sections of Section 34. The first one is 3475A, which is the effect of the proposed demolition on the location for which the demolition is requested. The second one is 3475B, which is the relationship between the demolition and other structures in the historic district. As part of this, the committee considered architectural style, design, and arrangement. The third was 3475B, which is the development plan. The applicant submitted a request to use the lot after demolition for a parking lot. The third was 3470A, which talks about the economic hardship. On June 1st, 2012, an appeal was submitted for consideration to the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners has 60 days to review, approve, or disapprove the decision of the committee. The Board of Commissioners may suggest modifications to the application and may then approve a certificate of demolition if that's what they wish to do, provided for the revisions of the plans submitted. And that's a brief overview, and I'll be happy to answer any questions before I turn it over to other people.
Any questions at this time? All right. Do we have Lisa?
We do have the Department of Main Street, affectionately known as PRA, that has filed the appeal to the decision, so I think it would be appropriate to hear from that agency.
Forgive me for interrupting, I'm sorry. Just to protect the record, before we begin the factual discussion about this case, I would ask that the appeal be dismissed. We don't need it by the time we file. If you look at ordinance number 3472, it's very clear the standard for an appeal is filed is that it can be approved by the committee. The committee met, I understand, on May 12th. In the appeal letter, this one's put to May 14th. Regardless of May 12th, May 14th, the appeal was not filed on June 1st. There's a 15-day period for an appeal. Now, I think the response to that would be it wasn't a certificate of demolition, however, that's the plain reading of the ordinance states, it's the decision of the committee to tell the permit to be issued, and that was done either the 12th or the 14th, either of those dates. It was not done within 15. But for any facts on that, we would ask that it be dismissed just on those grounds.
Okay.
Steve, could you come forward again? The date of the appeal letter was, again, what?
Please, for help, I have a package. I've got all those documents. If you'd like.
Sure.
He has that as well.
June 1st.
June 1st was the appeal letter.
Yeah.
Steve, do you have the ordinance in front of you that prescribes the procedure for the appeal?
Yes, I do.
Could you read the pertinent section, please?
Yes, it's Section 3476A, says, "Any interested party may appeal the decision of the committee to the Board of Commissioners within 15 days by filing a notice with the Director of Planning and the City Clerk. The Board of Commissioners shall review, approve, or disapprove the decision of the committee within 60 days."
So, it's not specific to the date of the appeal, excuse me, of the meeting or the issuance of the demolition permit?
No.
And in fact, if you need a demolition permit, it says the committee met, emphasized, and approved, and it gives the date and the demolition permit, so it's clear when it was approved.
And what is the date of the demolition permit?
The demolition permit was on May 17th.
Was it, in fact, the date of the issuance of the permit that you believe started the 15-day clock running?
That's correct.
On Friday, May the 11th, they voted to approve the demolition permit.
Correct.
And then you have 15 days. Fifteen, is that right?
The ordinance states that the interested party may appeal the decision of the committee to the Board of Commissioners within 15 days, but the actual permit was not issued until the 17th, the certificate of demolition.
So, you go from the time they approved it or the time of the permit?
Yes, that's what's the question here.
That is my question, and if you read the ordinance, it says, all I would have to say is from 15 days from the certificate of demolition, that that's what was intended. Instead, it says approval of the committee.
City manager, if it helps, I had a lengthy conversation today with the city attorney, and there was some conversation, Ms. McGee, very similar to that, but it wasn't on that specific. It was about the 60 days and when the 60-day clock started running, because it specifically says, "The Board of Commissioners shall review, approve, and/or disapprove the decision of the committee within 60 days." When does that 60-day clock start running? Because I was looking at that June 1st date, and I was trying to figure out when our time period went in, and Lisa Emmons is who I spoke to, and she said, you know, it's not really very specific. Again, the ordinance here wasn't very specific. I can step out and try to call Lisa if you would like for me to do that and ask this specific question. If you would feel free to do that.
Steve, could you read that one more time on the 15-day?
Certainly. "Any interested party may appeal the decision of the committee to the Board of Commissioners within 15 days by filing a notice with the Director of Planning and the City Clerk."
And does that include weekends and holidays? 15 days is 15 calendar days?
That's what it reads, just...
15 calendar days.
That was another question, you know, 60 business days, 60 calendar days, it was 60 calendar days. It's the same situation.
Well, without the presence of legal counsel for the city, I think I would advise the commission that that's a matter of your interpretation. One more question. We've not had an appeal to a permit issued under that statute any time recently that we could look back on for any precedence.
I can never remember this happening now.
I think the commission needs to make a decision on whether you think 15 days from the issuance of the permit satisfies the spirit of that, and if so, proceed with the consideration. If not, then it comes to be your determination that it did not meet the 15 days, and technically, then I think the appeal would stop.
Well, since it does not specify calendar or business days?
Typically, when it doesn't specify it, I think you would interpret that to mean calendar days.
Okay. Can I indulge you for just a minute? As I understood, and Lisa Thompson, please, I just want to make sure I have your attention. I know you were reading something at that time. There may be an interested party in the property, as I understand.
None of that has come to fruition, and we have to have this hearing within 60 days.
Correct, correct.
Sarah, could you get up to the podium?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And again, I don't want to get into arguing the facts of the case at this time, because I do think it's ripe for a ruling on whether this appeal stands or not, but none of the, we did continue this once to have those kind of discussions, and none of it came to fruition, which makes my clients more...
That's what I want entered into the record, whether or not we did continue it once before. It was not brought up that this was a problem when we continued it before.
If you'll read that continuance letter, it says when the hearing was heard and when it was approved, too. It says clearly it was approved on the 11th.
But my question is, I mean...
We continued this. We have not heard an appeal. Nothing was heard until today. I did not make this argument until now. I did discuss it with members of certain firms, the city's legal counsel, so they did, were aware that the argument was coming.
But it was never brought to our attention.
I'm bringing it to your attention now, which is the time to rule on it. There's been nothing filed, as far as I know, there's been nothing filed on this appeal, correct? Other than the letter appealing it. So, nobody's brought anything to your attention, because this is the time to bring it to your attention.
But what I'm saying is, you didn't file to dismiss it?
No.
Based on that? And why didn't you file to dismiss it, is my question?
I didn't know there was a procedure to file things in advance of this hearing. There's not a seven-day rule, as I would have in court, or anything like this. I brought it to your attention before we started the proof tonight, which is what I need to do to preserve the record on this.
Well, I'm asking, you knew the appeal was coming. You knew we were having this hearing, so why didn't you go ahead to file to dismiss it so we wouldn't have to be in this situation? If you want it dismissed, then why are we just now bringing it here before tonight? We didn't have to get all these people out, is my question.
Well, I don't think we got all these people out. I don't want to be putting, I understand what you're saying here, but let's remember, you weren't meeting between the last time this was on and today, so all these people were coming out tonight anyway. This is part of our presentation tonight, that it wasn't properly filed.
But if you've discussed that with legal counsel on the city's side, you couldn't have written a letter and notified everyone so that could have been entered into the record?
I probably could have done that, but did not understand that that was to be part of your procedure and have certainly not received anything from the other side to entertain any kind of discussion or motions on this.
Okay.
I guess I'm at a loss to understand how that...
Well, I don't think, I think we're here looking for a solution, and we're trying to appease both sides. We're not looking for a battle, we're just looking for a solution. And I also wanted to ask, you know, how had we proceeded on? I wanted that entered into the record as well. How had we proceeded on? Because we did postpone it, and we postponed it under the premise that it was actually going to take place, not that it was going to be dismissed. So, why wasn't that argument made at that time? Because your party was aware that it was going to be postponed, not dismissed.
I don't really have... Again, I don't want to make you contentious either, but I have a record to protect, and I have the right to make that argument, certainly.
I understand, I understand.
I have brought it, there is no rule that says I have to file anything within a certain number of days before. I have brought it before you now. You have more days to hear this case. If you all want to think about that, if you want to get legal counsel, that's fine. I can waive the 60 days with agreement of the other side. We can have another meeting to discuss that.
Well, let's pursue that just a moment, because we are at the edge of that 60-day window, are we not, Steve, to have this hearing?
I think there was one more meeting within the 60 days.
Well, I don't know that there was, but let's check that.
Yeah.
Well, it depends, that's the question. It depends on when the 60-day runs. Does it, that was my question, Ms. Emmons today. When does the 60-day start running?
See what it says.
Right.
Well, June 1st, 60 days would be...
But that would be from the point of the notification of the appeal. Was it, could it have been in May? You know, we would be way past that point, so it would be a moot point.
It's a moot point if this wasn't timely filed either.
No, it's the second section that we're reading about the 60 days.
Okay.
Excuse me. You want me to go ahead and read that section again as it relates to 60 days?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. "Any interested party may appeal the decision of the committee to the Board of Commissioners within 15 days by filing a notice with the Director of Planning and City Clerk. The Board of Commissioners shall review, approve, or disapprove the decision of the committee within 60 days."
So, that'd be within 60 days of June 1, would it not?
Yes. Well, the 17th is when the certificate of demolition was approved. June 1 is when the appeal letter came in.
Is there anything in the statute that would get in the way of this being rescheduled with consent of the other party?
The second portion of that paragraph under B says, "The Board of Commissioners may suggest modifications to the application and may then approve a certificate of demolition, provided for in the revisions of the plans submitted. If the Board does not act within the 60-day period, the decision of the committee shall be final."
Okay, I think the City Commission, then, is free to reschedule this any time prior to the lapse of 60 days, then. Do you agree with that?
With agreement on both sides.
I'm not sure that it would require agreement on both sides, would it? If it's within the 60 days, I'm not trying to be contentious, but just...
You mean, continue it?
Reschedule it. Well, I guess we are in the process now, so in your opinion, would it be a continuance, then? If that's acceptable to the other party, it would work either way, I suppose.
I think...
As long as it's within the 60 days.
From what I gathered from Ms. Emmons today, we can move to table the decision as long as it's within the 60 days.
Yeah.
And within that 60 days, we're trying to figure out exactly if the paperwork was filed, what days count as what days, because otherwise, we're making a decision on this, and we're not exactly sure how to count from point A to point B.
The other option is to continue and have the hearing and go through the process tonight, and if the other party is dissatisfied with the outcome and chooses to file some appeal on a technicality regarding the dates, then that could happen, I suppose, that way, too. I personally would like to have some time to review and listen to legal counsel before we make a decision of this magnitude. This was all surprise tonight.
Commissioners, what do you want to do? Want to file a continuance, or do you want to give it some more time? Reschedule this?
Yeah, I mean, I need to know if this is, if what...
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
That will be the 17th. City Clerk?
So, you guys want to make a motion to continue the appeal to be heard on the 17th?
Yes.
Yes.
So, move.
Second.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye. All right. Thank you all. Commissioner Abraham, you have the minutes?
I do. I move that the reading of the minutes for June 26 and July 3, 2012, meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye. Okay, under our motions, Commissioner Galt.
I move that the following bids be received and filed. Bids: Greenway Trail, Phase 1 project, Wilkins Construction Company, Central Paving Company, Jim Smith Contracting.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye. Municipal orders. Commissioner Watkins?
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second. Any questions? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order for Assumption of the Obligation of Paducah Water Works Under Assignment and Assumption of Assistant Agreement Between Paducah Water Works and Hendron Water District," be adopted.
Second. Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt?
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Application for a 2013 Kentucky Cultural District Grant Through the Kentucky Arts Council in the Amount of $5,000 for the Planning and Design of a Wayfinding Program for the Cultural Arts District," be adopted.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a quick question for Lisa, please.
Hi. Hi. I know that the Renaissance Area Master Plan discusses wayfinding. It does. And can you just tell how this may work hand-in-hand with that? Because it might be a little confusing for people, because I think this is probably the implementation portion, maybe. It is, it is. We met with, well, PRA is the sort of collaborative agency that supports and works with all the cultural partners, we call them, so Market House Theater, Carson Center, all the nonprofits. So, the Kentucky Arts Council is actually coming to Paducah next week to talk to us about what it means and what kind of support they're going to give us for being named one of Kentucky's five cultural districts. So, part of that was a grant that they offered to each of the five communities in the amount of up to $5,000. So, we all had a brainstorming session, and part of that brainstorming session was to talk about what did we think that the cultural arts district needed? And one of the things that kept coming up over and over and over again was wayfinding, signage. How do people get from Market House to Lower Town? How do they get to the Convention Center to the Carson Center? So, you're right, that in the ramp, it talks about wayfinding as one of the things that, you know, hopefully, we all can agree on, that's something that's in the ramp that we should do. So, in conversations with Steve Doolittle, he basically blessed that this was a really good idea for us to go ahead and see if we could get this $5,000 grant to help us on that path of establishing and designing wayfinding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Lease Agreement with Lamar Company's Release of a Portion of Property Located at the End of Fourth Street in Island Creek or Wayne-Sullen Drive at Fourth Street for an Existing Billboard Be Adopted."
Second.
Any discussion on this? All right, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye. We're going into our ordinance's adoption. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Sale of Municipal-Owned Real Property Held for the Use of Benefit of the Commissioners of Water Works of the City of Paducah, DBA Paducah Water." This ordinance is summarized as follows. In this ordinance, the City of Paducah declares city-owned real property located at the corner of Old Calvert City Road and Kentucky Dam Road, US Highway 62, which property was originally acquired by the Reedland Water District and by virtue of acquisition is now owned by the city for the use and benefit of the Commissioners of Water Works of the City of Paducah. DBA Paducah Water as surplus property and authorize the sale of surplus property by Paducah Water in accordance with the requirements of KRS 82.083 and the sealed bidding procedure set forth in the City of Paducah Code of Ordinance, Section 2-668. This ordinance further authorize the mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for the benefit and use of the Commissioners of Water Works of the City of Paducah to execute and deliver a deed of convenience of the surplus property.
Second. Any comments? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving Change Order Number 1 with Bluegrass Uniforms, Inc., for Uniforms for the Fire Department Employees and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Said Change Order Number 1." This ordinance is summarized as follows. "The City of Paducah hereby approves Change Order Number 1 with Bluegrass Uniforms, Inc., for additional items due to the incorporation of the Fire Prevention Division into the Fire Department. Clarification for uniform services and some items that were omitted. The mayor is authorized to execute Change Order Number 1 with Bluegrass Uniforms with unit prices, as stated in the change order being for the same period as noted in the contract beginning upon the execution of the change order."
Second.
Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Closing of a Portion of Garfield Street from Chesterhack Drive to Coxey Street and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute All Documents Necessary to Complete the Transfer of Property." This ordinance is summarized as follows. "The City of Paducah hereby authorizes the closing of a Portion of Garfield Avenue from Chesterhack Drive to Coxey Street and authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transfer of property to the property owners and/or abutting the public ways to be closed."
Second.
Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the board of commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a reimbursement grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Justice Cabinet for a 2012-2013 Law Enforcement Service Fee Grant Award to be used by the Paducah Police Department. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a reimbursable grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Justice Cabinet for the 2012-2013 Law Enforcement Service Fee Grant Award in the amount of $12,634 and $7,839 for personnel overtime costs and $3,596 for the purchase of L3 in-car digital cameras for a DUI enforcement program. A 25% cash match is required and all, and will be paid out of the police department's budget for the fiscal year 2012-2013.
Second. So this will get, um, people that have been drinking too much off the street and doesn't cost any extra money, that's good. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
I move that the board of commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city of Paducah ratifying a grant agreement with the Kentucky Environmental and Public Protection Cabinet Division of Waste Management for a 2012-2013 Kentucky Recycling Grant, approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Paducah and McCracken County Fiscal Court for the city's administration of funds received for the recycling grant to purchase equipment for the volunteer-operated recycling drop-off center located at 1830 North Eighth Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accept the recycling award. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah hereby approves a grant agreement with the Kentucky Environmental and Public Protection Cabinet Division of Waste Management for a 2012-2013 Kentucky Recycling Grant in the amount of $40,418.70 for the purchase of equipment to be used at the volunteer drop-off recycling center located at 1830 North Eighth Street. A local match of $15,450 is required with the city of Paducah and county of McCracken contributing $7,725 each, and Paducah Water Works providing in-kind donation of facility use $7,790. Further, the city of Paducah hereby approves an interlocal agreement with the McCracken County Fiscal Court agreeing to accept and to administer the funds for the recycling grant and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accept the recycling award.
Second.
Comments? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the board of commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled an ordinance accepting matching grant funds through the Kentucky Division of Waste Management for a 2012-2013 Household Hazardous Waste Grant for funding the annual city-county cleanup day and authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement, an interlocal agreement with McCracken County, and all documents relating thereto. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah hereby accepts matching grant funds in the amount of $33,700 through the Kentucky Division of Waste Management for a 2012-2013 Hazardous, Household Hazardous Waste Grant to fund disposal services and an educational outreach program for the 2012 Annual City-County Cleanup Day, and authorize the mayor to execute a grant agreement, an interlocal agreement with McCracken County, and all documents relating thereto.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the board of commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accept a grant through the Purchase Area Development District for reimbursements for construction and development of the Dog Park Project at Stewart Nelson Park. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute all documents necessary to accept a grant in the amount of $5,337 to the Purchase Development District for funding to be used for the construction and development of the Dog, the Dog Park Project at Stewart Nelson Park. No local matching funds are required.
Second. A tongue twister.
Yeah.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to go into our ordinance's introduction. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the board of commissioners of the city of Paducah introduce an ordinance entitled an ordinance rescinding ordinance number 2012-5-7923 and approving termination of a contract with Bluegrass Fire Equipment for the purchase of fire structural turnout gear for the use by the fire department, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract regarding the same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. On May 17, 2012, city and the Bluegrass Fire Equipment, Inc., here and after Bluegrass, executed and entered into an agreement for the purchase of structural turnout gear for use by the fire department based on a bid submitted by Bluegrass. After further review, city staff determined that the bid did not meet the technical requirements of the bid requirements. As such, the parties have now mutually agreed to terminate and cancel the agreement between them. This ordinance rescinds in its entirety ordinance 2012-5-7923, adopted on May 8, 2012, and authorizes and approves the termination and cancellation of the, of and authorizes the mayor to execute same.
Second.
Steve, this, the way I understand this, it's not the, the uniform contract, it's the fire turnout gear.
That's correct. It is turnout gear.
Want to talk to us about it?
Yeah, it's pretty much what Commissioner Galt mentioned there, is we had a technical discrepancy in the awarding, uh, we improperly awarded the wrong vendor, um, based on the specification, and now we're having to correct that, and the new bid, you're going to see an ordinance coming right behind this to introduce that for the vendor that should have been awarded the contract to begin with.
All right. Any discussion? Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled an ordinance accepting the bid of Fire Department Service and Supply Company for the purchase of fire structural turnout gear for use by the fire department and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Fire Department Service and Supply in the amount of $21,675 for fire structural turnout gear for use by the fire department.
Second.
And this is the ordinance authorizing the vendor that should have been awarded the original contract, and that's what this ordinance does.
And mutually agreed by all?
Yes.
Good. All right, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled an ordinance approving change order number two with Bluegrass Uniforms, Inc., for uniforms for the fire department employees and authorizing the mayor to execute said change order number two. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah hereby approves change order number two with Bluegrass Uniforms, Inc., and additional items due to the incorporation of the Fire Prevention Division into the fire department. The mayor is authorized to execute change order number two with Bluegrass Uniforms, Inc., with unit prices as stated in the change order being for the same time period as noted in the contract beginning upon the execution of the change order.
Second. Steve?
Sure. Just to refresh your memory, at the time we bid the original, uh, uniform contract for the fire department, this merger had not come to fruition yet, and we were, you know, we were still in the testing and pilot phase of it. Since that time, we, we have incorporated the newly formed Fire Prevention Division, all of their employees into the department as a whole, and, uh, as part of that, we wanted to establish a new look, change our uniforms, and this is the incorporation of the, of that staff and their uniform changes into our fire department uniform contract.
All right. Commissioner Galt?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled an ordinance accepting the proposal of Kentucky League of Cities for a three-year rate guarantee for workers' compensation, liability insurance, and property insurance coverage for the city of Paducah and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city accepts the proposal of Kentucky League of Cities for a three-year rate guarantee for workers' compensation, liability insurance, and property insurance coverage for the city of Paducah ending June 30, 2015.
Second.
Evening, Mayor Pro Tim and Commission. For your consideration is the recommendation to accept, approve a three-year rate guarantee with the Kentucky League of Cities. Insurance companies, uh, suffer in a, in an economy where they can't get return on investment, that, so investment dollars, and what that does is it creates a, an increasing rate environment, and so that's one of the reasons that it's for your consideration. As you know, we've been partners with KLC for a long time. They only service, uh, from an insurance services standpoint, they only service municipalities, that makes them experts. We use them, they have state-of-the-art firearms training simulators for law enforcement, they've got law enforcement risk specialists. We just, uh, received their 50/50 matching grant, for example, as a reminder. I use their KLC legal experts routinely for advice, and they, they offer a disaster recovery program that we began using in 2009 with the ice storm. It is, uh, we still, this rate guarantee would, would guarantee that our rate would remain flat, but we would still have, based on our increases in exposures, adding property or adding vehicles, um, or removing property and removing vehicles, our premiums would fluctuate based on our changes in exposure, our, uh, our work comp mod calculations, for example.
Any comments? Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled an ordinance authorizing the finance director to pay Kentucky League of Cities for workers' compensation, liability insurance, and property insurance coverage for the city of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the city of Paducah hereby authorizes the finance director to pay the Kentucky League of Cities in the total amount of $913,963 for workers' compensation, liability insurance, and property insurance coverage for the city of Paducah for fiscal year ending June 30, 2013.
Second.
Okay, so these, the premiums that you see before you are, really, the rate was basically flat, um, the increase, it is a 5% increase over last year, but it's mostly due to an increase in work comp mod calculation, which we get, uh, from a three-year claims analysis, uh, the past three years of our claims. It's really not an increase in frequency, our frequency is doing fine, but we had a year where we had increased severity in work comp claims, we had a couple of high-dollar work comp claims, so, um, that's what you, that's what you have there. It is about $47,000 more than last year's premiums, and nearly all of that is due to the, the work comp.
All right. Questions?
I guess one other, one other thought, as a reminder, um, we have, this is the first year that we have had an increase. We have driven down our work comp mod, uh, year over year. Back in 2005, 2006, our premium was nearly $1.2 million, just as a reminder, and we've continually driven it down year over year. This is the first year we have seen an increase.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Abraham?
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled an ordinance providing for the closing of a 20-foot alley from Ninth Street, North Ninth Street and Paducah and Louisville Railroad located between Madison Street and Harrison Street, and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transfer of properties. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah hereby authorizes the closing of a portion of, a portion, of a portion, a 20-foot alley from North Ninth Street and Paducah and Louisville Railroad located between Madison Street and Harrison Street, and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transfer of properties to the property owners in a, abutting, in or abutting the public ways to be closed.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler, um, commission, this is a, an alley that is adjacent to property that's being developed for your Lower Town Arts School, uh, in conjunction with, uh, West Kentucky, uh, Community and Technical College, and the adjacent property there. Again, this is a, an alley that is unimproved, it's a piece of real estate that we own, but it's unimproved, but it does have, uh, some utilities in it, and that portion of property being retained for a utility easement, a permanent public utility easement.
Is that right behind that building?
It's right, it's right behind the Madison Hall.
Between the building and the parking lot?
Yes. I mean, actually, Madison, the back of Madison Hall is right on the south property line of this, of this right away.
All right. Commissioner Galt?
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. You'll get to talk about this one, too.
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled an ordinance accepting the alternate concrete bid of Wilkins Construction Company for the construction of the Greenway Trail Phase 1 Project and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah accepts the alternate concrete bid of Wilkins Construction Company in the amount of $543,759 for construction of the Greenway Trail Phase 1 Project and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim, commission, this is the project that, well, the trail project that'll go from Campbell Street, uh, there north of the, uh, convention center to, uh, approximately behind the smoke shop. And again, uh, it's good that we're getting, uh, the concrete, in lieu of the asphalt, you'll have less maintenance, and you'll, I believe you have a lot better trail for that. We had previously bid this, uh, with a restroom in it. The restroom was enormously expensive, and with the location it was going to be in, it was going to be hard to maintain, so we were forced to rebid the project, uh, to take that out, so we're, we're looking, we're anxious to get to work on this project.
Okay, and this isn't the section that goes under the bridge?
No, this is not, this is not, uh, that's the Phase 2 portion, and actually, that goes under US 45, uh, there, uh, just-
Right at the bridge.
Right at the bridge.
All right. Thanks. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled an ordinance approving a memorandum of agreement between the United States Department of the Interior, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the city of Paducah to promote the survival and recovery of the Indiana bat, authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement and authorizing the finance director make payment to the Indiana Bat Conservation Fund in association with the Ojai River Boat Launch Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah approves a memorandum of agreement, MOA, between the United States Department of the Interior, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the city of Paducah to promote the survival and recovery of the Indiana bat in association with the Ojai River Boat Launch Project, and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement. Further, the finance director is hereby authorized and directed to make payment to the Indiana Bat Conservation Fund in the amount of $5,742.
Second.
This is an in lieu fee, uh, that is paid into a conservation fund, and there's only certain times of the year that you're allowed to take down trees that are, I guess, habitat for the Indiana bat as far as its mating, uh, season, so it's, uh, it's difficult with these projects to work in between everything that we have, and between mussels and bats, I've been muscle man, now I can be Batman.
And that's going to be my next question. That's good, that's good.
Sounded rehearsed, eh? Actually, well, I won't say.
Do you foresee any other wildlife that we're going to have to mitigate, or?
At this time, I do not. At this time, I do not. Uh, we've known, we've known about the Indiana bat for some time, uh, as far as this portion of the project, however, in consideration with the, I guess, complexity with the mussel, this is a, a minor, a minor hurdle. Just wanting to be environmentally sensitive and compliant.
Got it. Thanks, Rick. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled an ordinance approving a grant agreement with the Kentucky Housing Corporation for the 2012 Home Matching Grant for the Fountain Avenue Revitalization Area of the city of Paducah, and authorizes the mayor to execute said grant agreement.
Second. Steve?
Uh, we've received notice of the grant approval, it's for $309,000 to build seven new houses within Fountain Avenue. Upon acceptance of it, uh, we'll get started with construction financing, bidding that out, and, uh, we'll also get in full swing with the actual, uh, design of the new houses, but I think there was a map included in your packet that showed the proposed locations of those structures. One thing different about this grant that was different than the 2010 grant is, on this one, we have to have pre-qualified applicants, so before we actually start buying the houses, we'll have to have those persons pre-qualified and have financing through a bank for them before we actually start construction on the homes.
This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah hereby approves a grant agreement with the Kentucky Housing Corporation in the, uh, to obtain a 2012 Home Matching Grant in the amount of $309,500 to build seven single-family structures in to build seven single-family structures in the Fountain Avenue revitalization area, and authorizes the mayor to execute said agreement. The city will provide matching funds in the amount of $84,000 for this project.
He took a long pause in between Commissioner Watkins' seconds and his seconds. I was a little trigger happy.
Okay. So it's all kosher now?
It is. Sorry.
It's all right.
But he got it all read.
All right.
There's more information.
There's more information, that's right.
Do you have anything else to say now?
No, unless you have some questions.
Do you need me to second it again?
All right. Commissioner Galt.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council for specific services. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Greater Paducah Economic Development Council in the amount of $250,000 to be paid in equal quarterly allocations of $62,500 for performance of services as outlined in said contract. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2013.
Second.
City manager? Are you supposed to talk on this?
Well, I, if I have anything to say, I guess, but I don't have a lot to say here. I'll just point out, this is the GPDC, one first, right, in the order? That, I'm not sure about that. That the amount of $225,000 is $25,000 less than the prior year budget. That's all I had to say.
$225 or $250?
$250.
I thought it was $250.
Excuse me, I was reading from the wrong one. That's right, it's, it's $250. That's down $50,000 from the prior year appropriations. Excuse me.
Commissioner Watkins.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport for providing general aviation and air carrier services. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport in the amount of $136,430 payable in quarterly installments of $34,107.50 each for providing general aviation and air carrier services to the citizens of McCracken County and surrounding regions. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2013.
And that came down a little bit this year?
$10,000 from the prior year testimony to the good work of the airport and board, I'm sure, and I think the operational success out there, and I think the statistics are all moving in the right direction. So very positive sign.
June of this year had the highest passenger load in several years, so that's good. Okay.
Can we get that return flight coming in just a little earlier, though, at night?
Have to talk to SkyWest. Commissioner Abraham.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Area Transit System for public transportation services. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Area Transit System in the amount of $225,000 to be paid in equally quarterly allocations of $56,250 in public transportation services for the Paducah-McCracken County area. This contract expires June 30th, 2013.
Second.
That's the same amount as the prior year. The request was, I think, substantially higher than that, but I think the city commission can be proud that you're able to continue the funding level at the prior year amount.
Commissioner Galt.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Paducah Junior College, Inc., for the community scholarship program. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc., in the amount of $125,000 for the community scholarship program. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2013.
Second.
And we share this with the county?
County, I believe, contributes the same amount.
And I know Chad Chancellor said that people have commented on this when he does his searches, that they're very impressed that we do this here in Paducah.
It's a great opportunity for young people to get an education free of charge. If they just keep a 2.5 grade point average, they have, I think, 95% attendance and have no major disciplinary problems. They get their first two years of college at WKCTC free of charge. And we've got, I think, over 500 people signed up for it so far, and it's, it's a great marketing tool, and it will improve the labor pool of well-educated people in McCracken County will help bring in companies.
Good deal. Commissioner Watkins.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc., for the Paducah School of Art. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc., in the amount of $75,000 to be paid in equal quarterly allocations of $18,750 for the Paducah School of Art. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2013.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Abraham.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an inter-local cooperation agreement between the city of Paducah, Kentucky and the county of McCracken, Kentucky for an animal control program. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the city of Paducah hereby approves an inter-local cooperation agreement between the city of Paducah, Kentucky and the county of McCracken, Kentucky to continue to cooperatively administer a single animal control program, and authorizes the mayor to execute said inter-local agreement. This agreement shall remain in full force and effect for a period of two years and shall automatically renew for an additional period of two years unless either party terminates the agreement.
Second.
Jeff, do you want to say anything on that?
This is a revision and some modification to a 2004 agreement whereby the city of Paducah and McCracken County entered into an interlocal agreement to essentially consolidate animal control services with the county. And at that time, it was, I believe, understood or greatly anticipated that the confinement part of that would be conducted by the Humane Society. In the eight to nine years since this agreement was put in place, there have been experience that suggests a need for some, some minor changes here and there, but in my opinion, the change in the confinement arrangement from the Humane Society to the county necessitated a revision to this agreement to bring into this agreement recognition of the fact that that was not being done by a third party, but in fact was being done now by one of the two parties to this agreement. So most of the change is associated with the fact that McCracken County is now operating an animal control facility to which animals are being confined, and of course, other ancillary operations and programs ensuing from there. So written into here is recognition of the role that the county is now playing in that regard, as well as, I thought it would be a good idea to incorporate into this agreement mention of the various state statutes that govern the operation of an animal confinement facility. And additionally, we wrote in here some record-keeping and reporting requirements for the county for animals that go to the facility, or actually all, all animals handled by the county in the animal control function as well as the confinement. So it's improved in that regard. Another smaller change, again, driven by the fact that the county is now running a confinement facility, is the requirement that revenues associated with services provided by that facility, for example, a stray is picked up and confined and then reclaimed, and so the owner would pay a fee for that. Well, we wanted to make sure that the revenue coming in was used as an offset to the expense shared between the city and the county. In other words, that all revenue was first subtracted before we split the expense side of it. I might mention that the proportionate share of, of the cost of the animal control had leveled off in recent years to pretty close to 50%, but it is defined in this agreement as a proportionate share based on actual statistics generated, i.e. the percentage of animals collected from the city and the county respectively. So that's pretty simple, and it's, it's running pretty close to 50%. So I would answer any questions you might have. Is the McCracken County Humane Society still in operation, or do we know? Does anybody know?
They are.
Is it still in operation?
And this money, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, it goes for the animal control portion for the salaries for the trucks, the insurance?
Well...
Right?
It goes for portion of the entire operation now inclusive of the confinement portion of it, or the sheltering, I guess, is a more common word that's used there.
But prior to that, it just went for those?
No, it actually did cover the cost of the sheltering. The difference was that the sheltering was done by the Humane Society under separate agreement between McCracken County and the Humane Society. The city was not a party to that agreement. So arguably, it's perhaps an improvement to the agreement in that the city is a party to, with the organization that is, is doing the, the sheltering or the confinement, at least in, in terms of the contract, there is now a direct relationship there. Not that there couldn't have been otherwise, but there wasn't.
Okay.
City managers report.
Relatedly, the fiscal court last night approved this same agreement, so we're in tandem on that, which is a good thing, obviously. Fiscal court has also, upon its own initiative, created what is called an animal shelter advisory board. I believe that action was taken last night, and they would like the city commission to consider making appointments to that board. I will furnish you with a copy of that ordinance. It's, it's not greatly detailed. It, it puts in place an advisory board to provide high-level input into matters related to the operation of the county animal control facility. Not a lot of specifics beyond that. It does envision city appointments to the board as well as county, and then one or two joint appointments as well. I advised the county that, in my opinion, revision of the 2004 agreement was a necessary first step before any consideration could be given to, to the city's participation in appointments to a advisory board. Not sure what your feelings are on that, and not sure exactly what mine are today, because I think there's a question that remains as to what the long-term role of, of a county shelter is, and whether or not any other facilities existing or those that might come about in the future might be the eventual sheltering facilities for animals coming out of the city of Paducah and perhaps McCracken County. So that's something I'd like you to think about. In the meantime, there is an open invitation from the county for the city commission, de the public, I'm sure, to visit the facility that the county has created. So what I would like to do, Gail, is come up with a couple of dates and times for that, and then go around the horn with you all and see if one of those works for you, and we can schedule a couple of those tours and go out there and have you take a look at that firsthand, so that you're as familiar with that operation as, as you'd like to be. That's all I have.
Would you have any commissioners' comments tonight?
I would just like to make note as we were coming in, a couple of ambassadors mentioned that they were doing tours with the American Queen. And Rick, they wanted to commend you and engineering and public works on how, and also Parks as well, Mark Thompson, on how well-kept the city is, how beautiful it looked. And from, they heard so many positive comments from the people that were on those buses, that it was a very inviting community, and how much they appreciated it, and how very proud they were to be doing those tours. So it was a nice comment coming in to hear, but you all deserve all the credit for that because you've worked so hard, so, and you need to pass that along to everyone that's doing that on a daily basis, but it was really nice to hear.
Any public comments? Okay, we have an executive session tonight. Commissioner Galt, do you have that?
I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Future sale or acquisition of a specific parcels of real estate is permitted by KRS 61.8101B.
Second.
And we will not be making any decisions on this, so.
Can I have a pen, please?
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tim Kayler.
Aye.